Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We're going to call this meeting back to order at 7:34 PM. Today is June 13th, 2023. It's our last board member of the school year. Yay, just wanted to say that. Last board meeting. Would I say member? Sorry. I was a little excited. We're going to stand, please, as the lovely clerk leads us into pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, may I please have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Questions or comments on that? All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? Thank you. Board members, may I please have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as listed?
So moved.
Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? Thank you. Board members, we have a treasurer report this evening. May I please have a motion and a second that the treasurers report, including the cash report, school lunch fund reserve, and expense budget reports for the month ending April 30th, 2023, be approved? So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? Thank you. Moves on to special reports. Dr. Putnam.
Yes, we have one special report this evening about a textbook or a book that we would like to the board approve. I'll ask Mrs. Watt, building principal at the high school, to come up. And I believe I have a slide.
For having me. I'll be brief in terms of the description of the book and just, I guess, start by saying that we are grateful for your consideration of adding this to our 10th grade required reading for, in our English department. We had a group of students, teachers, our director of humanities, administrators, parents, come together really from the idea of students who are looking to broaden our required reading in our English department and to have a little bit more of a modern representation of our actual student population, looking for titles that represented students but were also from a different viewpoint that was not that of the oppressed, really is where this came from. So our DEI committee at the building level created a subgroup and actually opened it up to many more stakeholders who expressed some interest in being part of this. We had several suggested titles that we read over the course of the entire spring semester. So we had students and teachers recommend different books. We read, I think, six different books in total during that time and together made the recommendation to include Patron Saints of Nothing into the curriculum. It's about a Filipino-American teenager who's in his senior year of high school, having a really pretty standard typical school year and exploring all of the things that our seniors might, what they're going to do after high school, all of the same kind of push and pull that they're experiencing in that year, right up until he discovers that a relative of his, his cousin, has been killed in the Philippines. And he makes the decision, a very sort of out-of-character decision, to go back to the Philippines and to kind of learn a little bit more and investigate what happened. And the book is an incredible read. It's a quick read. Our kids loved it. I read it in no time at all. And it really helps students to explore everything from dealing with questioning faith, thinking through family connections and obligations that you have, identity particularly from the immigrant perspective. So there's a whole host of themes and topics that directly correlate with what our 10th grade English curriculum is, is looking to accomplish in the standards. Happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
Thank you so much. Board members, questions for Mrs. Watt? Yes.
I have a question. What were our students' feedback? Like, what did they really like about the book?
So I think that it was a pretty relatable character despite not having direct maybe knowledge or connection with the culture in most cases, but still feeling like the experience itself, not only at the start of the book from the high school perspective, but also because it is much more modern in that way, it's more relatable, but also in experiencing everything that happened after the fact and being able to tie it back to their own culture, heritage, and some of the pull that they have and the conflict that they might have in their own lives.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate when our students can see themselves or relate to the books. Thanks.
Other questions? I know this came up when I was at one of the PTA meetings and there was some really great feedback at the meeting, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes special reports.
Sweet. All right. That brings us to Lila's last report.
Yeah, so this is the last one. So obviously, today was the last day of school for high schoolers with next week being Regents Weeks and other final exams. Over the weekend, the girls' flag football team won sectionals. So not the past weekend, but the weekend prior to that was really busy for seniors. We had our annual senior breakfast, which was a lot of fun, signing yearbooks and watching our class video and learning who our teacher of distinction is, which is Mr. Baker this year. So that's really great. I absolutely love him, one of the best teachers I've had. And we've also had our senior bash, which was a lot of fun. And then, of course, graduation is next Thursday, the 22nd, at RIT. And then yesterday, we also had the ability to go back to visit our elementary schools and see our different teachers, which is a lot of fun. And then last Friday as well, the Black Student Union put on another amazing Juneteenth celebration performance. I know I went last year and this year, and both years have just been absolutely incredible. It had dances, you know, singing, choreography, history. It was just honestly incredible to watch. At Bay Trail, the bookstore has once again raised $500 for Happy Birthday Cha 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 and 500 for Water for Sudan. And the eighth graders went on the DC trip about two weeks ago. So this is the first trip since COVID, and they went to places including the Spy Museum, the Capitol, the zoo, and different memorials. And honestly, I still remember my DC trip. It was definitely a lot of fun and one of the highlights definitely throughout my Penfield career. So I'm glad it's coming back and everyone gets to experience that again. At the elementary schools, at Cobble, second graders have been giving morning mini Suzuki concerts. At Indian Landing, the chorus sang the National Anthem at the Indian Landing Red Wings game. At Scribner, students are looking forward to Fun Day coming up once again. And at Harris Hill, fifth graders had lots of fun spending the day at Camp Arrowhead today. Thank you.
Thank you, Lila. That was lovely, as usual. Questions or comments for Lila, board members?
Yeah, I have a question. Lila, would you like to repeat your senior year so you can do another prodigal thing?
No. No, thank you.
Are you sure? I mean, that's a great question, Catherine. I'd love to know what your favorite senior event was.
Um, that's definitely hard to probably pick one. I think, I mean, I had a lot of fun at ball, but I think like nostalgia-wise, definitely like going back to Scribner and seeing everyone and all my old, so most of my teachers retired kind of the years that like I was like their last class or like in the following ones. And so all of them came back and it was just really fun to see them. So, and then one of my teachers, she had her class make like posters for all the students that she had, and that was just really sweet. So that was definitely probably my favorite thing overall.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing. We're going to miss you.
We are. Miss you too.
All right. Now, back to you, superintendent report.
I'm going to do it after.
We're not there yet.
I'm going to get there.
Yep. Thank you, though.
They didn't forget.
All right. Is it my turn?
It's your turn. Sorry. I'm sorry. It's your turn.
You're good. I, for those watching at home, I would share that we, prior to this board meeting, which is why we have the later start, is we did the Arts and Education Award Celebration as well as recognition of tenure, years of service and retirement. So the board and district office, we all just came running down the hall from the auditorium where that event took place. And so that's why it's a little, a little, a little winded here and we're, we're going to be all right. So superintendent reports, I just have some staff and student honors, a couple of updates, and then I'll turn it to Dr. Driffl for some business updates. And so honors convocation, more than 200 PHS students were recognized for their outstanding achievement at the honors convocation ceremonies, one for nine through 11 and one for seniors. Congratulations to all of the award winners. Scholar-athlete awards, I always think this is cool, especially when I can say things like every one of Penfield's spring athletic teams earns Scholar-Athlete Honors. So congratulations to baseball, softball, boys and girls track, boys tennis, boys and girls lacrosse, girls' flag football, and boys golf. So just really a great opportunity, again, focusing on that we have great athletics, but it's always students first. So it's student athletes, scholar athletes. Congratulations to all of those individuals and the teams. Speaking of athletics, we had held our athlete recognition ceremony, and the high school recognized 35 seniors who will be continuing their athletic careers in college at the athlete recognition ceremony on June 6th. 11 students graduating also signed scholarships to Division One and Two schools. Congratulations to all of the student athletes who were honored at this event. It was wonderful. And then just a couple of updates around our groundbreaking ceremony in Buddy Up Olympics. And then we're going to be recognizing a couple of very special people. So groundbreaking ceremony, we were thrilled as a district to hold a groundbreaking ceremony for its new transportation and facilities center and a ribbon-cutting ceremony for its first electric bus on June 7th. So we did this last week. Really great opportunity. We invited our current school board as well as a former board member, Barb Abiarz, our former business official, Dr. Marx Ansoucy, members of the Sustainability Club or Committee, Sustainability Committee, which was also adults, and a couple of our student reps who were there, as well as representatives from Buildings and Grounds and our architects, SEI architect and campus construction, and Bluebird, which is the provider of the electric bus. So we actually got on the electric bus and took that bus from the high school over to the facility where we are beginning to break ground for the future Transportation Facility Center. So got to ride on my first electric bus. Thank you to Mr. Gala, our Director of Transportation, who was our very special bus driver for that day, and then came back and celebrated. So just some great photos there of both honorary digging. Please don't worry, none of the board members or administrators are actually going to be doing any of the work out there because that, that picture alone took some time, I think. But it was great to have our students who have really, really have been incredible cheerleaders for the Sustainability Committee and, and conversations around the electric bus. So that were great. They cut the, you can see there's very large scissors there. So it was a great event. Buddy Up Olympics, it was hot, but a very fun day, full of activities at the Buddy Up Olympics on June 2nd. Congratulations to all the participants. Once again, just incredible weather and a great way to celebrate our students across the district. And now for some, I guess, congratulations, but also sad news is that a thank you to Lila for two years of service as the student representative to the Board of Education. Best luck in college. We have a few things for you, Lila. Nothing will, no gift will be enough to say thank you for all of the late night Tuesdays you've spent with us. So thank you.
I know. I should have ran it down there.
Congratulations.
Don't trip on my cord. I know.
Lila, on behalf of the board, we really appreciate your reports because they're always so wonderful and very detailed. And I know that I really love when you engage in the meeting, and sometimes students, I think, feel a little intimidated to do that, but, but not you. You have always asked a question if you had a question, and I thought that, that really that was really awesome. So we know you're on to do great things and really appreciate your service with us, and we won't miss you.
Thank you. I mean, I really enjoyed the past two years. I think I learned a lot, too. I mean, there were a lot of things I didn't really know about, you know, how like decisions and things are made in the school setting. So, you know, it's really helped me a lot, and I think also, like, you know, public speaking wise, this definitely helped. So thank you as well. Really enjoyed it.
Thank you, Lila.
Thank you. Another round of applause, I think, for Lila. It's been a very difficult two years because you've, your presentations are always better than mine, so, but I am sure that will serve you well post-high school. So congratulations and thank you for everything. So we have one more, but there's a, incredible thank you to Lisa Benati-Chidzie, dedicated service as a board, as a board president and a board member over the past nine years, and of course, you'll be missed. I will just say, you know, Lisa, you started as a board member the same year I started as superintendent. And so I'm a little jealous that you get to go off and retire.
I wanted a cooler.
But 35 years and you get a cooler bag. I, I just, you know, honestly, as you've been an advocate for students even before you were on the school board, working through SEPTA and supporting really this whole student focus our board and our district has always been committed to. You've been someone that, as a superintendent, I can call and, and sort of work through sort of thinking of what we want to do as a district. I have truly been honored to work with every board member we've ever had and, and, but, but you being here nine years and starting the same time, we were both new and kind of saying, I don't really know what we're doing, but I feel pretty good now. We've got this down. But again, I just truly from me on behalf of the district, thank you so much. We do have a few things for you on behalf of the district, and I know any board member who'd like to share anything, too, but I'll start with.
I'm going first, though. Because I have the floor and I'm allowed to go first.
Yeah, 100%. And I think, is there the, is Lisa's card down there somewhere? Oh, perfect. So this is on behalf of the, of the district. That's the whole team right there.
Goodness.
All right. And then I actually have more stuff hidden, so I just wanted to. These have to go right in front of your mic or phone.
Those are really gorgeous.
Honestly, Lisa, thank you so much for everything.
Thank you. Because I don't want to get all, whatever. I'm not going to look at you all. I just wanted to say, you know, as Tom mentioned, and most of you know, I've kind of been at this quite some time, and it's really given me the opportunity to, I'm not emotional, I'm not emotional, to meet so many wonderful families and teachers and administrators, a couple of different superintendents in my time, handful of different board members, and really, and you know, I speak from my heart, from the bottom of my heart, this team Penfield is just so full of love of students and love of public education. And I just want to shout out to all the families and all the teachers and staff and administrators, and I'm really so happy to have been, you know, part of this journey. It really saddens me in recent years, the attack on public education as a whole, honestly, deeply, deeply saddens me. And things like SEL and DEI are not new initiatives. You know, these are things, just like science standards, that over the years get updated, names of things get changed, and it's important that we are changing things to keep up with what our students need. What I'm most proud of, though, in Penfield, is that we don't just take things and shove them at students and administrators and say, go figure this out. When we get the new social studies standards or we get the new SEL benchmarks, we take those, we make stakeholder teams, we do professional development, right? We do all these things, we unpack things, and we make it Penfield, and we make it for Penfield. So I'm so grateful. I know that other districts don't do that. I mean, some of them do. But I know we take pride in doing those things. The other thing I wanted to share is I don't know, and I didn't know this before being a board member, what staff and teachers and administrators really do? You know, what does a superintendent do or a business official or a teacher? And I don't think everybody really realizes, you know, no one comes into education for the money. You know, we all joke about that, but people come here because they really care about kids and about public education. And when there's things happen, you know, like a leak on Christmas Eve or an injury of a staff member on a Friday, or even a tragedy in a student's life or a family's life, small or big, you know, these teams, these people, teachers and principals, they all come together, and it doesn't matter if it's Christmas Eve, or it doesn't matter if it's a Sunday night, people are meeting because they want to make sure when students and staff are here that we are supporting students and staff. So I want to say thank you to all of you because I appreciate everything that you do. To my fellow board members, for all that you do, above and beyond your full-time jobs and your roles as parents and stakeholders and community members, to give of your time for free is just so tremendous. I don't think people understand. And I thank you, and I'm so glad I've been a small part of this group, and I'm proud of you all to continue all this work. And I hope and pray as things start to change, things will come back, there'll be much more support of public education because you all deserve the same dignity and respect that you show every day to this community. And I am grateful that I've been a small part of this team. So as you know, I say, go, Team Penfield, go!
We're supposed to be thanking and celebrating you, and of course, because you're an incredible board member.
I needed to talk first because if not, I would just like it all sad.
Thank you.
Speechless. Sorry.
Oh, good, I did my job!
I, I do have something to say. As a newer board member, I've, I've known you for a while, right? Yeah. We've been around this block a couple times together. But being here with you, you've inspired me to step up to the plate and to listen and pay attention and be aware and put my best foot forward. And you are not a small part of this. You are a very, very large part. And I can speak probably on behalf of everyone here. We appreciate your, your humility, your, your realness, your genuine, your kind, you're super smart, and I just, we appreciate you so very much. So thank you for all that you've done for Penfield, and thank you for reminding us and folks at home and how important public, public education is and that just to like, we need support, just like how we give support. So it's a two-way street. So thank you, my darling. Thank you, President Lisa Benati-Chidzie.
I just want to say that, you know, the board members, the board is made up of seven members, and every member has their strengths. Every member brings something specific to the, to the table. And, you know, it's fortunate we have educators, but what I always look at you is you've always been the lead student advocate. I mean, if there's anything issues with, that are just, I wouldn't say out of the norm, but we're really making sure that we are doing the absolute right thing, best thing for the student. You're always in front, making sure that those questions are asked and those decisions are made. And that's, and with you leaving, I think, you know, that's going to make, require all of us to step up because we, I wouldn't say rely on you, but we follow you in the advocacy. And I think that's contribution will, will be missed.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Can we go home now?
No.
We've got more to do.
And as a reward for you, we're going to continue the board meeting. Thank you, Lisa, for everything. And, well, you won't be at the table anymore. Obviously, the relationships and the bonds that have been created, you're always, always part of Team Penfield. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's a good way for me to say, that concludes superintendent report. No, it doesn't. I got Dr. Driffl. Dr. Driffl, you're up.
Okay. Follow that.
Follow that.
Well, who put business updates after that? Good evening, board. I'm here to talk about change orders. So there are three action items on your agenda this evening, the first of which is two change orders for the stimulus-funded projects that we're doing with HVAC work. Both of those are credits, cost-saving measures, so they save the district a couple thousand dollars. We have to review 2022, 23 year-end financial authorizations for fund balance purposes, and we need to approve the 23, 24 Foundation Aid Plan. So let's start with this current year's financial year-end authorizations. So a couple of years back, state law now requires that boards of education get prior authorization, prior to June 30th, the end of the fiscal year, prior to the auditors coming in, so that you have an understanding of where we stand at year end. So just kind of very high level, what we do is take last year's assigned fund balance, so that's the amount of money that we put towards the budget. That was only $200,000. And then we take the assigned fund balance, that's the 4% of the current year's budget to get to that $4.6 million number. We add in this year's projected revenues. That's a little higher than what we were anticipating, $115 million by a couple percent, driven by a couple factors. One is the rising interest rates. So last year, we took in about $22,000 in interest revenue. This year, it's going to be close to $1 million. So literally 40 or 50 times more on the revenue side of things as the central banks have, you know, increased the rates. The other increase in revenue that we saw was county sales tax, about a million and a half dollars more than we anticipated. So obviously, that's really positive. Some of that is just from inflation being higher, it's representative of that, but still pretty good numbers there. We also had a little bit more of a BOSI surplus than we anticipated. So as you likely know, BOSI is not allowed to retain fund balance, so anytime they have a surplus at year end, they return it to the component districts. It's always a little bit because they, you know, budget conservatively, but it was bigger this year than we were anticipating. So those are the primary drivers. We add in carryover encumbrances from the prior year, so those are bills outstanding after June 30th. The purchase orders were issued, but the services or the goods weren't delivered, so we carry that into the next year. And then we add in the, any transfers from reserves this year, the only one was the voter-approved bus purchase back at our May vote. And then we subtract out expenditures in those year-end encumbrances that we don't think we're going to expend by June 30th. That's pretty in line with what we were expecting in our budget goals, guidelines, and factors document. We always target kind of a 4% to 5% variance in expenditures, so coming around $105 million in expenditures on what was $109 million budget this year, kind of in line with what we were thinking. We need to allocate interest money back to the reserves, that's $125,000. And then we, in the budget development process, indicated that we were going to sign $400,000 in fund balance to next year's budget, and then 4% of next year's, close to $117 million budget is that $4.6 million number, which leaves us to $12.8 million in fund balance that needs to be allocated. So what we can do with that is put it in reserves. That's typical. You can use it to fund projects, you can use it to prepay certain expenses. What our recommendations are in your packet this evening is to transfer, like we did last year, it's $9 million to the project. And the reason that we do that is because we wouldn't have to borrow for that $9 million now. So I was talking to our municipal advisors, they do bond underwriting for a bunch of schools and municipalities back on Friday, and they're seeing 4% sort of interest rates right now. So we're saving 4% on borrowing by financing or by paying with cash, but some board members know that the state also aids all, all project money as if it was borrowed. So not only are we saving on the interest expense for not borrowing, we get revenue in and building aid, 2% or 3% higher, whatever rate the, the state uses in that year based on, on these savings. So it's like a 6% or 7% savings just on that $9 million. So that's why we're recommending that in conjunction with our district treasurer and municipal advisors. The other recommendation we have is to continue funding the TRS Reserve. So that, if you recall, is the newest reserve that the state allows. It's limited to 2% of the prior year's TRS, Teachers Retirement System earnings, up to only five years. So this will be the fourth year of funding it, $700,000. So we have about $35 million in TRS earnings here. So 1% is $350,000, 2% is about $700,000. Come next June, will be the fifth year of funding that reserve. We won't be able to put any more money into it. By statute, it would be fully funded. It's one of the reserves that the state actually dictated terms on, and we don't have local control, but we plan in our reserve documentation to fund that fully over the years, so we're continuing on that path. The other recommendation we have is to add basically the, the rest of the amount, the $3 million, to our 2021 capital reserve for buildings as we work towards whatever next project we're going to have down the road. And then there's a small allocation, $20,000 for a allocation to our employee benefits and accrued liability reserve, EBLR. That lets us offset a balance sheet liability we have come the audit process in August. So that gets us to $0 in available fund balance with those, those allocations. Do you have a question? Do you have a question?
If I could, could you just recap what the TRS Reserve is for, so people understand why we have that reserve?
Absolutely. So TRS Reserve was an addition from the state that's complemented the existing ERS Reserve. So the ERS, Employees Reserve System, is for all of our staff, non-instructional. So for years, the rates, the employer contribution rates would fluctuate into massage the burden on a school district, we able to set aside some money that in an event of a big swing in the contribution rate, we could utilize reserve money to kind of keep things stable as opposed to saying, oh, we've got to raise taxes 6% this year. So we have a little bit of money set aside specifically for that restricted purpose. For a long time, boards of education said, why don't we have a TRS Reserve? Like, it's the same thing. It's actually more expensive. So finally, over years of advocacy, the state allowed that. So if the TRS Employer Contribution Reserve or Contribution Rates increase substantially next year, we have some money in the bank to use if we should need to. So it allows us to save against a known liability. So that's what that's for. Does that make sense?
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. So any questions on the year-end authorizations? Again, this is subject to change. The auditors come in in August. The Audit Committee will review the audit in September, and we'll bring it back to the full Board of Education in October. The, we talked about the New York State Foundation Aid Plan. This is the third year of the plan. This is the last year of the plan. We solicited public feedback at the board meetings on April 18th and at the budget hearing on May 2nd. I didn't receive any feedback on our proposed plan, so we're keeping it as is. It requires board approval, and it must be submitted to the New York State Education Department and posted on our website by June 30th. So as a reminder, our Foundation Aid Increase for next year is $6.3 million. And these are the categories in the funding that we've allocated in our plan. So increasing graduation rates and eliminating the achievement gap. This is for the PHS Alternative Education Program and also for increases in tuition to the career and technical opportunities through 101 BOSIs. Reducing class sizes is through the kindergarten through sixth grade branch. So all of our elementary schools and sixth grade at Bay Trail. We have contractual obligations to keep class sizes at a certain size. So what this allows us to do is actually knock down those obligations to a lower class size across the full K6 spectrum. Addressing student social emotional health, these are all pupil services, pupil services for next school year, new services, specifically new psychologists and investments in co-curricular programs and interscholastic programs. And then finally, $2.8 million for providing resources to English language learners, students with disabilities, and students experiencing homelessness. The bulk of that is for the integrated co-taught classrooms and also the increased tuition for the BOSI programs that we reviewed back in the budget development process. There is also some funding for a new English language learning teacher and also some dollars associated with the transportation expense for students experiencing homelessness. So that, between those four categories, brings us to just over what that required threshold is, that's $6.376 million. And that is it for me, and thank you, Lila, and thank you, Lisa. It's been great.
Thank you. Board members, any questions for Dr. Driffl on? No? All right. Great.
Superintendent reports.
Woo-hoo. All right. So we're moving on to item five, Board Members, Public Comment. Instructions to participate in public comment period are listed in the agenda and available online. Individuals who choose to participate in public comment period should note that they agree to and are bound by the terms outlined in Policy 1515, which includes conducting yourself in a civil manner, following the District Code of Conduct, and refraining from any slanderous statements or forms of prejudice. In order to protect individual rights, comments that are personal in nature should be sent directly in writing to the board president or their superintendent. Generally, the board does not respond to items presented or questions raised, and any information or response, if warranted, will be sent in writing. Should individuals act in a manner inconsistent with the policy, they may lose privilege of the floor at this meeting or future meetings. Individuals scheduled to speak must limit their comments to three minutes or less and recognize themselves by their name and any organization if they have one. Right? All right. Cool. We have one speaker this evening. Uh-oh. I have the list somewhere. Okay. Our speaker this evening is Mrs. Mur.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dana Mar. I would like to thank the Board and Administration for your work and specifically for your work on the policy revisions around curriculum that I plan to reference as I speak this evening. As referenced, on the New York State School Boards Association website, under Policy Services page, policy is the school board's single most important function. The policies you have been reviewing are all important respective to curriculum. I would like to bring to your attention the absence of one very, additional very important policy component. I will be referencing the legal requirements around parental access to curriculum materials as noted and listed under the law referenced as Protection of Pupil Rights, 20 U.S. Code, 1232H-C1CI. The law reads as follows. The right of a parent or student to inspect upon request of the parent any instructional material used as part of the educational curriculum for the student and any applicable procedures for granting a request by a parent for reasonable access to instructional material within a reasonable period of time after the request is received. Reference to this law and specifics within can be found on page 783 of the 39th edition of the School Law Book. This was also a topic reviewed at the 2022 New York State School Boards Association School Law Pre-Conference, and it was explained clearly that parents have the right to inspect and view curriculum materials upon request. This may mean, in some cases, that due to copyright laws, when curriculum materials cannot be duplicated, that a parent or guardian may need to come in and view the materials. It has come to attention that in some cases, parents who have requested to view curriculum materials have been denied access under the pretense that it is not required by law that parents or guardians be provided access to these materials, which might be assumed if looking at the section of the law referenced as 1232HA, as this section of the law speaks to access to instructional materials that are related specifically to surveys or evaluations. While I am by no means a lawyer or legal expert, I am respectfully requesting that the district again review this under the legal reference of 1232H-C1CI and that the policy specific to curriculum access be reviewed and updated as appropriate to accurately reflect the legal rights of students and parents according to education law. It is the responsibility of the district administration and board to not only be aware of these requirements, but to ensure that these requirements are fulfilled. I also respectfully request that upon further review of these policies, the communication be provided to parents and guardians in a transparent manner so that they are aware of their legal rights pertaining to curriculum access. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment period. We're moving on to item six, Facilities. As Dr. Driffl mentioned, we have a couple of change orders this evening. They are listed in your packet, and both are credits to the district. May I please have a motion and a second that the change orders described below be approved? Second. Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Moving on to item seven, Financial Items. May I please have a motion and a second that the following year-end 22-23 fund balance authorization be approved as presented? So moved. Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed. Thank you. And item B, may I please have a motion and a second that the proposed plan that was presented by Dr. Driffl this evening be approved? So moved. Second. All those in favor? Questions or comments on that one? Sorry. All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed. Thank you. We're moving on to item C, Donations. May I please have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve an amendment totaling $10,219.48 to the 22-23 budget as shown as the amount submitted, as both revenue expenditures as shown below. There's RIT Technology, the Arts in Education for Bay Trail, Cobble's, Harecel, and from Family First Federal Credit Union. Second. I couldn't remember if I asked if there was a motion. Any comments or questions on that?
Wait, did I jump the gun?
No, no, I don't, I think I was reading and I couldn't remember what I said. Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed. Thank you. So we have some policies for first read this evening. We're continuing and I think almost finishing our five-year review of policy. So there is use of copyright materials and a regulation and guidelines for that. And religious expression as well as home tutoring. So these, a lot of these were quite old, and we used our Erie Policy Service to update, you know, many of these. I do think we got some comments already from a couple of board members. And so we meet this week, right, Policy?
Oh, we do?
I think we do.
Yeah.
Okay. So we can, so we can take those comments back and look at those. And then those will be on the website as well until the July meeting, because we don't have another meeting in June.
Okay.
And then we have policies for second read and approval from our last meeting. And I think I checked with Kathleen. We didn't have any comment, public comment on those. And so board members may have a motion and a second to approve the second read of policies as listed in your agenda. So moved. Second. Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Item nine, may I please have a motion and a second that a board approves the agreement between the Penfield Administrative Council and the Penfield Central School District effective July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026? So moved. Second. Questions or comments on that? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Moving on to item 10, President's Remarks. We have our Monroe County School Board. We just had one, which was the annual meeting. I brought the agenda, so I would remember what it was about. We had a really nice meeting, I think. It was a review of the year for Monroe County School Board. So we had a great review from Amy West, the new executive director. We had a representative from NISBA available. They talked, Joanne from BOSI II talked about Act for Education. It was really great. Mark was recognized for his work with labor relations.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So it was a really great meeting. I don't know if you, Mark or Krista, have any comments from that meeting? No.
So I would just say, you know, the Monroe County School Board Association, I can't recall if it was this year or last year, time flies. But, you know, there was a turnover in leadership, administration, I should say.
Right.
And Amy Thomas took over as executive director. And Nancy Pickering took over as program director. And there really was, you know, a lot of, you know, a lot of revisions how we do things. I mean, there's, it made it a lot more accessible to us. I think, you know, in addition to the normal values they provide, the value of making it easy for us to engage with what's going on really helped out. So I think it's, it just shows that it's a good organization, is providing a lot of value to us, and is continuing to be strong and help us advocate.
Thank you. It was a good meeting. And then I think it was HFL had their jazz choir or senior? Anyway, but it was lovely, lovely music. They, typically, they have the outgoing president from the school board side, like, bring their talent from their school. It was really nice. It was a nice, it was a nice evening. Okay. And then we had two district community committees. Does anyone want to speak to Audit Committee?
Sure. We met the 25th of May, and we had our external audit shared. We went over the process, or we'll be starting, we went over what the process will be. It was started a few weeks ago. Went over kind of the scope of the audit, looking at things such as like our key controls, stimulus money and how it must be audited every year, because it's considered a high risk by the federal government, looking at our lunch fund, looking at fraud risk, fund balances, et cetera, et cetera. We had internal claims audit report. We met with external honors for, they met with the external honors, oh my gosh, I can't speak tonight, auditors for preliminary work, let me enunciate. And I think the good news is our data, not that we're always comparing apples to apples, but it's pretty consistent from year to year. And then we had also an internal audit update. And our internal audit started on our facilities. Did I miss anything?
No. Thank you. Questions for Kristen? Anyone?
Just don't make me say that word again.
All right. And then we had our last, our last, our very last Code of Conduct meeting, and I missed it because I had an event for, at school for one of my kids. Were you able to attend, Nicole?
Yes. Let's see. I do know that it's going to be coming to the board next month?
Yeah.
Yeah.
July 11th. It's our last meeting. We had an opportunity to review the draft in its entirety. We are seeking feedback still from the members of our Code of Conduct Committee and our administrators. And it will be coming to the board July 11th. And then we'll be opening it up for 30 days for public comment and review.
Nice.
I'm excited about that. I'm going to be totally coming for public comment on that. It was, we did a nice job. I'm very proud of us. That was a long process. And it was a really nice group of different stakeholders and community members, and it was really great. Sorry, go ahead.
So I know there's going to be a 30-day public comment period, but will the board be able to get ahold of the document before the meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Absolutely. Yeah.
I have a feeling I'm going to want to pick it up and put it down, pick it up, put it down. Yeah.
Yes, of course. We'll send it forward.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So unfinished business. I just wanted to mention that, I know Lila mentioned the Juneteenth presentation, and it was just so wonderful. I meant to comment, got wrapped up in flowers and all sorts of fun things tonight. But it was so wonderful, the event, and I know it was recorded, correct? So where can people find that?
So there are a couple of channels that are available. Part of the communication that went through Parentsware listed locations to be able to access it. One of the things I'd like to just celebrate, the work of our K-12 Social Worker for Equity and Access, Stephanie McCleary. She did a phenomenal job with our Black Student Union with organizing and getting them ready, and the students were phenomenal. So I just want to celebrate her work and leadership and connection to our Black Student Union, but more importantly, the students and all that they put in and the talents, as Lila referenced. So there was singing, there was dancing, there was history, there was poetry. There were so many creative acts that were shared last Friday. So thank you for acknowledging.
It was stunning. If you haven't had a chance, really, I cried more than once. I mean, and I'm a crier, but I mean, it was really, to really see our students get up and be so vulnerable, and it was really, it was really a beautiful performance. It was lovely. So I hope everybody out there gets to, gets to log on and see it if they haven't, because it was great.
Yes.
Okay. Any other unfinished business, board members?
No, but can I make a comment? So I went to the flag football game, girls' football game on Sunday, and unfortunately, we did not win. But I would like to say that as a community member, I watched another Penfield parent say to the opposing team, "Good luck with your, on Monday, and I hope you win," which is saying a lot. It just made me take a step back and say I'm really proud to be a member of this community that they, because we lost. And we were sad, like, they were sad, but that was so impressive that, you know, we were just displaying the right thing to do, because kids are always watching. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing that. All right. Is there any new business? You have new business? All right, bring it, girl.
I just, I have, this is a really great way to end this meeting. I have a really wonderful feel-good story. So last week, there was an accident, a car accident outside of my home. And my husband and I and my neighbor, we ran out to make sure everybody was okay. And there was, so it was between two cars, and then there was a third car, an orange, like, cool little souped-up thing, had pulled over to, and there was this young, this young man who came out, and I was like, "Are you okay?" and there was this young, this young man who came out, and I was like, are you okay? Were you in the accident? He said, no, no, no. I just pulled over to make sure everybody was okay. And I saw the uniform of one of the people who was in the accident, and this gentleman was in, like, an Eagle Scout uniform. He was on his way to this big convention, and because his car got wrecked, he couldn't make it anymore. So, this young man just pulled over to make sure everybody was okay. He was on his way home from work. And so, we're like, okay, cool. So, we stuck around to make sure that, you know, the helpers arrived. Helpers meaning police and our fire service. And I saw on this young man's car a Penfield lacrosse sticker. And I was like, hey. I was like, hey, are you a graduate? Like, do you go to Penfield? And he's like, no, no, no. I graduated in '21. And I was like, oh, okay. I introduced myself, you know, Krista can, and I said, so, his name is Austin Kelly.
Oh, I know Austin.
Okay. And, and he gave permission for me to share this story and his name, because, you know, consent, right? It's very important. And so, I was like, all right, Austin, you know, like, great, thank you for stopping. And he was just filling me in. I said, so what are you, what are you up to now? What kind of magic are you sprinkling out in this world? And he says, well, actually, I'm putting myself through school. He's going to Robert Westland College, and he has two jobs. And I was like, wow. And then, he was just so caring and kind to these two folks who were in the accident. And my husband suggested that he become a volunteer firefighter. But then, I heard he worked two jobs, and he's going to school. And I said, Austin, don't do that. Go find some fun. So, it was wonderful to interact with a Penfield alumni like that and to see how genuine he was. And he just actually lives down the street from me, so I'm not going to stalk him or anything. But he's, it was just, it was wonderful. It was really wonderful. So, I just wanted to share that with you folks, and I guess Penfield's doing something right.
That's right.
Yeah.
We're doing the good work.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for sharing that.
Of course.
I love hearing about our students. That was lovely. Thank you both. All right. Well, I think that's the end, peeps.
That's all she wrote, Lisa.
That's all she wrote. Are we ready?
No.
All right. No? You want to, you want to keep going?
It's all right.
Can I please have a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting at 8:26 p.m.? So moved. Second. Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed. Thank you, everyone. Go, Team Penfield, go!